Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
This is the public hearing and public meeting of the Committee of the Whole regarding Resolution Number 250955. Mr. Christmas, will you please call the roll and take attendance?
Councilman Squillen, Council Lady Gardier, Councilman Jones, Councilmember Young, Councilmember Driscoll, Council Lady Lazada, Councilmember Bass, Councilmember Phillips, Councilmember O'Neill, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, Councilmember Thomas, Councilmember Harity, Councilmember Ahmad, Councilmember Landau, Councilmember Brooks, Council President, Councilmember O'Rourke, Council President Johnson.
Present. Thank you. Our core member committee is present, and this hearing is now called to order. Mr. Christmas, will you please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution 250955, approving the 2526 Housing Opportunities Made Easy Program Annual Program Statement and Budget, which addresses expenditures by various agencies in the first year of the home program.
Thank you, Mr. Christmas. We will now begin taking testimony from the public on the proposed 2025 through 2026 Home Program Statement and Budget. Before proceeding, I would like to lay a few ground rules. We will allow individuals approximately two minutes to give their testimony, and that will be...
That long, please.
Yes, ma'am. That will be monitored... Excuse me. Some order, and we can talk... I got you, Ms. Judith. And so, we will be monitoring the clock, but we will be here all afternoon and make sure individuals that come out and provide testimony have the opportunity to provide testimony. It's also a great opportunity to speak on and support an initiative that will address the issue of housing inequality here in the city of Philadelphia, working in partnership with five mayor as we address a very, very pressing need here in the city of Philadelphia. Once you are called up to give your testimony and your time is up, we just ask for you to be respectful of other people who took time out of their schedule on this rainy day who would also like to testify. And so, with that being said, Mr. Christmas, can you please call our first person to testify, first two people to testify? And I also want to just say, just for the record, in terms of everyone that's in the audience, we do want to hold this on public hearing in decency and in order. And so, if you have any comments or sidebar comments, please take them outside the chambers. If you have any feedback that you would like to give, please wait till your turn to come on up to the actual table to provide your testimony, if that's all right with you. Rather, you agree or disagree with anything that we're talking about today, but who would disagree with helping individuals get housing? And so, with that being said, I'm going to ask for Mr. Christmas to please call up our first two individuals to provide public testimony. First individual, Mr. Mo Rushi, and second individual, Mr. Ryan Boyer. Mr. Boyer, please state your name for the record, and please begin your testimony.
My name is Ryan N. Boyer. Last name spelled B-O-Y-E-R. I'm the business manager of the Labor District Council of Philadelphia, Baltimore, D.C. and vicinity, as well as the business manager of the Philadelphia Building and Construction Trades Council and a longtime Philadelphian and a property owner. I'd like to thank this august body for inviting me and to say that this is a very, very important and serious issue, the issue of affordability, where you have to balance the deeply poor that the Philadelphia Housing Authority is doing a great job with trying to house and expand more units, as well as neighborhoods that are called middle neighborhoods that Councilman Jones and former Councilwoman Parker have greatly studied that area. But we have to realize that if we don't keep some of the middle class and working class people in the city of Philadelphia, that create craters in our tax base. So, we have to very carefully and delicately make incentives for those people to stay that can leave, as well as take care of our most vulnerable, while understanding that the taxes that that middle class brings actually helps the programs that can help lift our poor up. So, when we do those things, because we have to realize that we could lose those populations to neighboring suburbs and increasingly becoming more frequent to the state of Delaware, where you see, if you go there on an average Saturday, you'll see a lot of people that work for SEPTA, the police department, the firefighters, that they're increasingly moving to the city of Middletown, which is the fastest growing city in the state of Delaware. That is a real possibility. So, we have to take these deliberations not as one against the other. How can we marry the two moral choices? They're great moral choices. We want to protect the least of these, but we also want to preserve what we already have. And we have some great programs in Philadelphia. This city council has been one of the most progressive city councils on home preservation in the country. I go all over the country, and they say that Loop, UPA, Basic Home Repairs, repair, restore, renew. We should marry those programs so that we can help all citizens of Philadelphia. And in spite of their income, because affordability is a crisis whether you're at the bottom or you're just overbroke and you have a job, a just-over-broke job that puts you a little bit outside of that framework, we have to protect those neighborhoods. We need those windfields, the Mount Aries, the northeast. That makes the fabric of our neighborhoods go. We've always had aspirational neighborhoods, and we can't afford to let those neighborhoods fail. We have to protect both. That's why I'm here. I normally don't participate on this day because the AFL-CI was having a big thing. But this is an important, very serious issue that we should not let our passion and emotions guide, but let's use data-driven solutions to put the great work that Kelvin Jeremiah is doing with the private sector, and the city has something to play, and let's preserve and protect every homeowner in Philadelphia, and make new homeowners, and make rent affordable, and make home ownership affordable. And the only way you do that is expand the pie. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Mr. Mohamed Rushi, please begin your testimony.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, members of the committee. My name is Mo Rushi. I am chair of the Philadelphia Accelerator Fund, chair of the Philadelphia Housing Development Corporation, and I chair the Mayor's Policy Roundtable for Construction and Development. Unofficially, I mentor and spend much time assisting community developers, whom the majority are Black and Brown, through the development process as owners and landlords out of my own office. I'm here today to testify in support of Resolution 25095, approving the year's budget for the home program. Let me start by first saying that there are many ways to spend the first $200 million. Many people have great ideas. Some are better than others. So, I want to thank everyone that has worked tirelessly on this. I want to thank the mayor, who has opened the door in transparency with everyone, constituents, nonprofits, and for-profits, trade unions, consultants, to gather as much input as possible to get an equilibrium and a balance that can make a difference. Let me start by stating some common sense facts or goals on how this plan continued to evolve, to try to reach the most number of people as possible. The most affordable home is the one that the people are living in. Saving an affordable home is the easiest way to achieve affordability. Second, the existing housing stock that people are living in is aging rapidly, and at a certain point, much of them can deteriorate to a point of being unsafe or unhealthy to live in with no other alternatives. That economically, spending money that can leverage more dollars is not only a smart way of spending money, but has many other positive outcomes that we don't talk much about. That new construction provides high-quality options for people. That homeownership is the most successful path achieving equity in neighborhoods by creating paths for creating generational wealth. So, why not do everything all at once? We can do that. We just need $6 billion to make sure all homes are fixed. That number has been floated around for years. That's what we need, with 100% of the public land is built for affordable housing. But that's not realistic. We don't have $6 billion. We have close to a $2 billion plan, of which $800 million are in bonds, and over $1 billion in land, which is not only a great and bold program, but it can achieve substantial progress on all points I mentioned above. So, let me talk very briefly on some of the programs where it hits some of the goals mentioned. BSRP is every dollar spent leveraging other dollars? No, it doesn't. But it is the least expensive way to preserve people in their own homes and creating housing stability. The Accelerator Fund, a fund that primarily is for 100% Black and Brown businesses, and within the last two years, we've spent over 14, approved and closed over $14 million worth of loans, leveraging about $80 million worth of projects, of which 95% of the applicants are 100% Black and Brown. And in the pipeline, we have another $80 million in projects with another $11 million that is committed. That money is leveraging itself 1 to 7. Again, 1 to 7. So, 20 million will leverage about $100 million, $150 million in projects for affordable housing. Gap financing for new projects. As chair of PHDC, we have approved over a dozen projects over the last six, nine months, where, just like the Accelerator Fund, a $3 million gap financing created $2 billion worth of projects with low-income affordability. And needless to say, just short on time, I'm not going to talk about Turn the Key, but it has created generational wealth in an unprecedented manner in Philadelphia's neighborhood. So, I can go on and on here, but I wanted my testimony to be more just about, not just a blanket support, but a true belief that this program will do much for our communities and for many affordability levels. Thank you for allowing me to testify today, Mr. President.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Mr. Christmas, please call the next panel to testify. Thank you for your time today, fellas.
Would Reverend Gregory Holstein, Rochelle Lashley, Garrett O'Dwyer, and Abraham Reyes Pardo, please come forward? Again, Reverend Gregory Holstein, Ms. Rochelle Lashley, Mr. Garrett O'Dwyer, and Mr. Abraham Reyes Pardo, please come forward. Thank you, ma'am. Please state your name for the record and begin with your testimony.
Rochelle Lashley.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, councilmembers. As I said, my name is Rochelle Lashley, and I am here for Mayor Sherrell Parker, as well as PA, West-Southwest Rising, and I'm a resident of District 3. I am here to urge you to amend the home plan to get more funding on low-income homeowners and renters who need it most. I have lived in West and Southwest Philadelphia for over 50 years, and this time, I have seen a lot of change. Developers are coming through and are changing our neighborhood. People are pushed out. We are being priced out of our own community. When I retired, I was on a fixed income. I applied for a basic system repair program because I needed home repairs. These home repair programs are really important to keeping homeowners in our homes. They told me I was not qualified because I was just over the income limit. So, I support increasing the income limits for home repair programs of people like me who are on a fixed income and just over the limit. But I believe that if you are increasing the income limits, you should prioritize low-income people who have been on waiting lists before you give funds to higher-income people. There are over 10,000 people on the waitlist, or maybe lower by now, for the home repairs. These people have been waiting. Low-income people should be the priority. It's a simple principle. We should start at the bottom before we go to the top. The struggle is real. Start at the bottom, not the top. So, I believe that the home plan is needed, and I thank Sherrell Parker, Mayor Sherrell Parker, for even initiating this so that we can have something to work on, not just with her, but through the council, so this can pass, and then we can get these things going. I want the budget to support homeowners and renters like me, not developers and wealthy people. That is why we are urging you to amend the home budget to prioritize low-income people and people who have been waiting. Thank you again.
Council President Johnson and members of the city council. My name is Garrett O'Dwyer, and I'm the policy director for the Philadelphia Association of Community Development Corporations. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today to support an amended home initiative year-one budget and the greatly needed resources it represents. Philadelphia is in the midst of an affordable housing crisis. Monthly rent and mortgage costs are out of reach for too many. The cost of home repairs can be prohibitively expensive, and the cost of utilities has skyrocketed. However, the risks that come with housing insecurity are not borne equally. Our poorest neighbors face an unbearable burden in meeting their housing needs and serious consequences if they don't get help. This is why we must prioritize housing assistance for those who need it most and clear existing waitlist prior to expanding program eligibility. Before we assist those for whom meeting their housing needs is a difficulty, we must help those for whom it is an impossibility. In this moment, we are seeing grave threats from federal policy changes to our current systems for housing our most vulnerable residents. Recently announced changes to the Contiminal Care Program will jeopardize over 2,600 beds of permanent supportive housing that are currently keeping people off the streets. For the people in unaffordable and unsafe housing, or for those without any home at all, the Home Initiative can address immediate, ongoing housing needs, and we must therefore act with urgency while allocating funds carefully and appropriately. We support efforts to further increase funding for key programs beyond what was in the resolution as introduced. Increase housing production and preservation funding will provide needed resources to both increase and protect the supply of more deeply affordable housing, particularly for vulnerable populations that the market does not serve. We also need more resources for rental assistance and homelessness prevention programs, which help our most at-risk neighbors with critical housing needs. Programs like these and the many others that the Home Initiative will support are not, in the end, just investments in housing and the sticks and bricks that make this city. They're investments in people, in Philadelphians. They will unlock the doors to new possibilities and have transformative impact on communities and the lives of residents. We thank you, City Council and the Parker administration, for your leadership in building a more equitable city and the opportunity to testify today.
Good afternoon. I'm Abraham Reyes Pardo. I'm the vice president of Housing at the Urban League of Philadelphia. The Urban League of Philadelphia is a 170-year-old civil rights organization. So, I'm here to voice my strong support for the appropriate funding needed for the home initiative. As we have entered a new season of political discourse at the federal level, it is both inspiring and essential to recognize how the city of Philadelphia, its leaders, agencies, and dedicated public workers continue to make equity a central value. At a time when many communities across our nation face division and uncertainty, Philadelphia's commitment to fairness in housing policy stands a model worth protecting. And I'm going to repeat that. Philadelphia's commitment to fairness in housing policy stands a model worth protecting. As a housing counselor, I have seen firsthand how equitable housing initiatives transform lives. A stable housing gives families the foundation to build opportunity, health, and hope. Yet, these gains are fragile. Across the country, efforts to weaken fair housing protections and restrict the Department of Housing oversight threaten to undo decades of progress. These efforts are not just policy shifts. They are setbacks to the very idea that everyone should have a fair chance to achieve sustainable housing. Home delivers community-based solutions that empower residents from all backgrounds to tribe. By supporting both renters and homeowners, it strengthens the stability of our neighborhoods and the resilience of our city. When we invest in programs like this, we are not simply building housing. We are building belonging. But we must also confront the challenges ahead. The pandemic reconfigured housing markets across America. Large-scale investors purchased and consolidated properties, often outbidding local buyers and reshaping neighborhoods that once felt secure and community-driven. That's why we must redouble our commitment to help renters to transition into homeownership as well. Programs such as Philly First, Turn the Key, and One Philly Mortgage will strengthen the foundation of our neighborhoods and ensure that no one is left behind. Ultimately, housing stability is about more than bricks and mortar. It's about dignity. It is about opportunity. It is about legacy of a city that believes every resident deserves not just a place to live, but a place to call home, and thank you so much.
Would Kenneth Bagos, Sherri Richardson, Rafael Alvarez Phabbo, and David Langley, please come forward? Also, would Rodney Whitmore and Carrie Rothman, please come forward? Sir, please state your name for the record. Let's see here.
Thank you. My name is Dave Langley. I'm the executive director of the Philadelphia Accelerator Fund. Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to speak in support of this very worthwhile and important initiative. The Philadelphia Accelerator Fund is a federally certified community development financial institution and a 501(c)(3) that primarily makes gap-filling loans into affordable housing development projects throughout the city. In addition to expanding the supply of quality affordable housing in Philadelphia, our mission is to also help small developers, emerging developers, minority-owned development firms, and nonprofits scale up their development activities. As our board chair alluded to earlier, to date, we've closed or committed $14.2 million in financing, inclusive of 29 discrete transactions, leveraging private capital at approximately a 7 to 1 ratio on average. Our closed loans have helped to finance the development of 191 units of housing already, of which 84% will be deed-restricted as affordable for at least 15 years. Our committed loans will finance another 121 units, of which 94 will be for sale, brand-new Turn the Key-eligible three-bedroom homes in neighborhoods like Manchua, Point Breeze, East Parkside, and others. This is what we're able to do with the resources we have now. The availability of additional capital via the Home Initiative would enable us to do a great deal more, both in terms of new rental housing and new affordable homeownership. We currently have credible pipeline for more than $12 million in new loans, including more than 60 new rental units and 150 units of Turn the Key housing. Access to new resources will help us to deliver on the LOIs and term sheets that we have issued to our many developer clients, particularly those small, Black and Brown-owned firms looking to build affordable housing in the city on vacant city-owned land. I do want to stress, any city resources we're able to access via home will be used to supplement rather than to displace the capital we have raised so far and continue to raise privately. We currently have six private lenders in our investor syndicate and are actively raising new investor capital as best we can. All that said, with the CDFI fund under continual threat at the federal level and the increased cost of construction making it more and more difficult to originate private debt, the ability to access city resources via home could not come at a more critical time. Thank you. Time's perfect.
Good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to present my testimony today. My name is Kent Bigos. I'm the Executive Director of the Affordable Housing Centers of Pennsylvania, DHCD-approved housing counseling organization. I'm here to sit in support of the City of Philadelphia's Home Initiative, which represents a once-in-a-generation opportunity to address the most persistent housing challenges facing our residents, ensuring every family has a safe, warm, and stable home, expanding access to homeownership as a pathway to wealth and helping homeowners pass their homes down to the future generations. I commend the City Council for its diligence in evaluating each program of this plan and as this is an opportunity that we do not want to squander. I first want to express my deep appreciation for the city's continued investment in housing counseling services. Philadelphia's housing counseling network is recognized as one of the strongest in the nation due to this large part of the city's long-term commitment and the trust we have earned in delivering nationally-recognized programs such as the mortgage foreclosure diversion, eviction diversion, the Philly First Home programs. We also connect households to programs such as Turn the Key to help them purchase one of the newly construction homes. Every successful program under the Home Initiative will rely on the outreach, trust, and technical support that housing counselors provide, and increases in housing counseling for subsequent years will be required. And while PHDC has initiated its own housing counseling operation, the DHC Counseling Network is in each of your districts, accessible to help Philadelphians maximize the resources of the Home Initiative. Therefore, funding for DHD Housing Counseling, HC's needs to increase to expand our capacity, especially as we help the city meet its ambitious goals of producing and preserving thirty-thousand units. I want to discuss the support of a couple of the new programs that the administration is proposing starting, such as the WELLS program. ACOPA started its WELPS program in 2022, and we've heard stories about families torn apart because of the lack of state planning. The word relief resonates constantly through many of the families that we have served. And this funding will provide the rocket fuel to help the necessary people to expand the program. Plus, the One Philly Mortgage Program is also a great absence to help people to access homeownership. I want to emphasize that Home Initiative is not just bricks and mortar. It's about people. It's about seniors that want to pass their home down to their families and about helping them achieve homeownership. And the city's investment will only reach its full potential if it's paired with the trusted relationships like housing counselors that build block-by-block and family-by-family with continued partnership and support. We can turn this vision reality. Thank you very much.
Would Carrie Rothman, Will Gonzalez, Rosalyn Harris, and Edna Williams, please come forward? Okay. Would Melissa Montz, Dawn Colburn, and Seneca Grant, please come forward? Sir, please state your name for the record and begin with your testimony.
My name is Will Gonzalez. I'm the Executive Director of SEBA. SEBA is a coalition-building organization in the Latino community of Philadelphia. Thank you, City Council, for giving us the opportunity to testify on this important matter. Thank you also for the modifications that you made, especially around the Basic System Repairs, Philly First Home, Tangled Title, and Turn the Key. It's important that you continue your oversight over these, especially when it comes to serving limited English proficient populations in our city. We are really worried that folks who are limited English proficient may have problems reaching some of those programs, specifically BSRP. As you know, BSRP is very logistics-heavy back and forth. We also respectfully request that you look at housing counseling. Housing counseling is very important. More than half of the programs that you're funding through this initiative require housing counselors. And as housing counselors faces threats from Washington, it's more important than ever that we support them. Thank you also for Turn the Key and also for looking at Turn the Key in a strategic way and looking at neighborhoods that may merit an increase in the subsidy. Last but not least, support CDCs. They are there before and they're there after they do brick-and-mortar projects. And last but not least, please continue your oversight. After you vote this resolution through, it is now up to the executive branches, departments to implement them. And we understand that you are the legislative branch, but you do still have oversight over them, and we want this to succeed. Again, this is a great accomplishment for the city of Philadelphia, and I thank you again for the opportunity to testify. Muchas gracias.
Good afternoon, Council members. My name is Melissa Montz, and I am proud member of One Pennsylvania. I want to speak today about the urgency of directing the Home Initiative funding to the people who need it the most. I have lived through almost every form of insecurity, housing insecurity, in this city. Before I ever lived in an Odin Properties apartment, I was displaced by L&amp;I and given ten days to move out of a rooming house because it was unsafe. I had no money and no options. Later, in a different unit, I was evicted because my rent was higher than my SSI check. I literally was priced out of having a home. And when I thought I had finally found stability, I moved into an infested Odin Properties apartment where sewage overflowed, trash piled up, and repairs were ignored. Those conditions made me severely sick. Today, I live with pulmonary hypertension, congestive heart failure, and chronic respiratory failure. These aren't isolated experiences. They're symptoms of a crisis. Half of Philadelphians are renters. Of those half of tenants, forty percent of them live in unsafe housing. And thirteen thousand affordable units will lose their affordability restrictions in the next decade. Mayor Parker's initiative aims to produce and preserve thirty thousand units funded by eight-hundred-million dollars in bonds, a historic opportunity. But only twelve percent of home funds are directed toward renters, and there is no guarantee the funding will go to deeply affordable or permanently affordable rental homes. This is where I've learned the importance of codification. Did the mic go off? This is where I learned this is where I learned the difference, the importance of the word codification, writing into law how money must be allocated so the people most at risk are not forgotten. Right now, only two percent of home funds are codified for homeless prevention. That is only guaranteed funding for households under thirty percent AMI, the poorest families in our city. And here's the truth. When we fund deeply affordable housing for households under thirty percent AMI, it frees up units at every other income level and stabilizes the entire housing market for everyone. It's not only morally it's not only morally right, it is structural, it is structurally sound possibility. I'm sorry, policy. We are calling on City Council today to codify this in legislation, a commitment to prioritize low-income families in all programs. We are calling on City Council to vote to support the amendment from Councilmember Gattie to add thirty-four million dollars in funds for programs our families need the most. One of the programs that urgently needs more funding is Fresh Start. We are asking for ten million in funding for the anti-deplacement fund, displacement fund, for renters to support the Right to Relocation Bill that was passed unanimously in June. So on one so no one else experiences what I did, being displaced with no support and nowhere to go. I want to thank the eight councilmembers who already sent a letter to the mayor asking to prioritize low-income households. Thank you, Councilmembers Gattie, Landau, Brooks, O'Rourke, Young, Phillips, Jones, and Lazada for standing with low-income renters and homeowners. I hope that all of City Council will stand with us today to protect the families in greatest need in our city. Organizing has taught me new words like capitulation, meaning giving in after resistance, and eugenics, the idea that some lives are more worth protecting than others. When the poorest residents are left out of major housing plans, that feels like a kind of capitulation. And when some communities' low-income, and when, excuse me, the same communities' low-income, disabled, black, and brown families are continually displaced, it starts to resemble a quiet form, quiet, modern form of eugenics. But meaningfully investing in people under thirty percent AMI is not just fiscally responsible, it's morally responsible. This is our chance to make Home Initiative truly live up to its name. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Dawn Colburn, and I'm a member of One PA Renters United Philadelphia. I rent in Councilman Phillips District. I was born and raised in Philly, and I've had to couch-serve for nearly my entire adult life because I could not afford a comfortable home for my family. Every time I got within hand's reach of affording to rent, it went up. It was always available for those that have, but not for us. I am almost sixty years old, and I was only able to find my own place to rent two years ago. And I finally found the spot, and I had to fight for my landlord to even make repairs. Why do I have to be in a certain class to live comfortable and safe? It shouldn't matter what income bracket you're in. You should be able to live comfortably no matter what. So today I speak out so that people do not have to go through what I went through. We need this home plan to be for us, for single black mothers like me who work to support our families and communities. We are calling on City Council to change this plan so that does not leave out those of us who need it the most. We need the majority of the funding to go to low-income families making under thirty thousand. Prioritize us.
Would Ms. Seneca Grant, Diana Coleman, Allison Hughes, and Kenny Golson, please come forward? Ma'am, please state your name for the record and begin with your testimony.
Edna Williams.
Ma'am, you can begin.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Edna Williams. I'm eighty-five years young because eighty-five is the new fifty-eight. I am proud senior entrepreneur on the radio every Sunday morning from seven a.m. to WTMR eight-hundred a.m. I'm an advocate for the homeless and seniors and homeowners. And I'm in Councilman Curtis Jones District, section of the Overbrook West Philadelphia. I'm here to speak about the importance of the Basic System Repair Program, BSR, BSRP. Last year, I needed major repairs to my home, the roof, the drainpipe, and both second-floor bays. I could not afford these repairs on my own. BSRP stepped in and saved my home. The PDHTC contractors were professional, polite, respectful, and did an outstanding work. I want to thank Mayor Sherelle Parker, the first African-American woman mayor of Philadelphia, for keeping her promise to help the people of this city, especially super seniors like me. I also thank the members of the Philadelphia City Council for their great work they're doing. Please continue funding and supporting BSRP. This program helps seniors like me and people who are less fortunate stay safe and proud and secure in our homes. Thank you very much.
Please begin, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Allison Hughes. Thank you for this opportunity to present testimony on the proposed Home Plan Budget. I'm a long-term resident of West Philadelphia, Third Council District. I am president of Reach Community Impact, and today I stand with West, Southwest PA rising in urging this city to amend the proposed home budget plan to make lower-income families earning thirty to fifty percent of AMI the greatest priority in this plan. We applaud this administration for taking this bold step to address our city's overall housing crisis. It's critical that we prioritize the lower-income families earning thirty to fifty percent of AMI who are priced out of the rental market and homeownership. These families are experiencing the most severe housing instability. We need housing for our nursing assistants, daycare workers, retail workers, and, like my son, sanitation workers. Our neighbors are frustrated that they cannot afford to live in the very communities that they were raised in. They are the hardest hit, and they're being put out on the streets. These households are most likely to be rent-burdened, risk of eviction, living in substandard or overcrowded housing. They feel left behind because we're watching developers come into our neighborhood and build homes for four-hundred-thousand dollars on the same streets where we played as children. We see construction happening all around us, but the doors being built are closed to the very people who've kept these neighborhoods alive through years of disinvestment and blight. Now we're invisible. This sends a devastating message and further divides our community. We welcome the Turn Key Program, the Turn the Key Program, and ask that you think again about revising the plan to include some duplexes to allow some of the thirty to fifty percent of AMI families to be able to increase their borrowing power and have better economic opportunity. It's always said that you can tell what someone prioritizes by looking at where they spend their money. If we're serious about improving housing conditions in our community, we must guarantee that our most vulnerable people at thirty to fifty percent of AMI are put first. Clearly, there's a great need to expand the income limits of the Basic System Repair Program beyond its current level. However, we understand that there are fifty-five-hundred families that are low-income, who are currently on the waiting list and in need of critical repairs. We're talking repairs where people are using their ovens to heat their homes. We're talking repairs where people cannot flush, don't have adequate plumbing to flush a toilet. These families must be made a priority. This is a public safety issue as much as it is a housing issue. For the higher-income families, we urge you to put additional money into programs such as Restore, Repair, Renew, and those programs should be expanded to cover the needs of the higher-income families. Thank you very much for your time as well as your commitment to a more just and stable city of Philadelphia.
Please state your name for the record and begin your testimony.
I'm here for Ms. Cynthia, the lady who was supposed to be here. She couldn't make it. My name, Andre Dawkins. This is what I'm here for. I hear, I have heard, okay, I have heard a lot of things being said at the last meeting and this meeting about this affordable housing. It's a beautiful thing that I was born and raised, eighteen-twelve North Twenty-Fourth Street. I was born in a house at eighteen-twelve on the second floor. I was actually born there, not in the hospital. I lived there all my life, and the neighborhood has, it looks beautiful down there. But they say it's for affordable housing, but how can it be for affordable housing when you got these skyscrapers up there and the lowest rent you could get for a studio is thirteen, fourteen hundred? And they keep saying they want to keep the heritage. How can you keep a heritage when you pushing it out? How can you keep it? They have not made airhouse yet for none of the people that have been there all their life, the most like Ms. Jones, Ms. Betsy, that's been there all their life, that's losing their home because of the property taxes and this, that, and the other. They have not did none of these things. You know what I mean? I hear so much good things, but I have personally, personally did this. See, I don't want to say nothing, but I don't know, not what I heard, but I know. I hear that you're getting construction companies right for Philadelphia to do all that stuff. Every, I don't want to, every site. And I just got a hospital, but I have an operation on my brain. I have a sixty percent chance of dying. I have cancer. I have strokes, and I have a heart, I have a pacemaker. I have cancer, I have strokes, and I have a heart, I have a pacemaker, and I have stress. But I went to every construction site, and everyone said Jersey. Ain't none say Philadelphia, I said, yeah. Alright, that's first thing. Second thing, then they say affordable housing. I called every one of these buildings, and they say, I said, y'all say y'all do affordable housing, and it says on the site, apartment for 400, 500. Oh, that's, that wasn't us. That's the wrong site. It seems like they getting this money and they telling y'all they're gonna do this, but that's not what they doing. They 1300, 1400 dollar apartments. They're not doing nothing what they saying. They saying what they ain't doing or nothing. And it seem like everybody in this city is like a racehorse. They got them blinders on, they'll see nothing on the side. They don't see what's going on. You know what I mean? But for me, as a black man that's 64 years old, been incarcerated, got 36 years clean, been an S gang member called the Valley, walk these streets every day, talking to young folks. I personally walked, talked to young folks. Young folks and people say, man, they gonna kill you, then I have to die. Because the only way it's gonna change for us as people to stand out there and tell these children what's going on, tell these old people, help these old people like we used to do. I remember the times, even though we fought the gang war, we had respect. We walked around and see an old lady carrying her bag, we took it to her house, we didn't need a penny. We better not took a penny because if our parents took out, we gonna get women anyway. You know what I mean? You're supposed to do this because this is what you're supposed to do for your community. But the problem is, we don't have no community more. We had buildings. We don't have no community, we had buildings. And buildings is not a community. I heard that man say, yeah, we need to bring these people in. But if you bringing them in, where the people gonna go if they're spending there? Where they gonna go if they're spending there? So they gonna sleep on top of them? See, if they coming in and they the only ones coming in, where the people gonna, they're spending there, they need this help. So if y'all gonna really help, I'm 100% with you. I will do anything. Yeah, totally. And I'll be honest with you, everybody from Philly know, they gave me eight months to live, six months to go. Now, maybe I will die, maybe I won't. See, I'm not afraid of it because death is a part of life. If you been here, you gonna leave here. So I'm not afraid. But when he take me, he take me. And I don't listen to what a doctor says, when he take me, he take me.
Oh, that's right.
You know what I mean? But I'm just being real with you. I'm being real with you because I been, I done called these places and asked for the same ones on the site. Said you got apartment for two, you got a one-bedroom for $400. No, that ain't us. Another place. These are the same places y'all got on these sites that said they got this stuff, they don't have none. So that's all I'm saying. If y'all really about this, let's be about it for real all the way. Don't just sit in this building, walk out there and look at it.
Yes, sir.
Alright? That's all I got. I have to go now, I got a doctor's appointment. Y'all have a good one.
Good afternoon, and thank you, City Council, for having public testimony in the hearing on the Home Initiative today. My name is Kenny Golson. I am from the King Sessi neighborhood of southwest Philadelphia. That's Councilwoman Gauthier's district. It's one of the poorest neighborhoods in the city. I have lived there my entire life and seen firsthand the consequences of rising housing costs and displacement. I am here today to call on the mayor and City Council to support southwest Philadelphia by making sure this money funds programs that directly help the black working-class people in my neighborhood. We must prioritize working-class people, especially those making 30% of AMI or lower. This is where the housing crisis is greatest in the city. Homeownership programs are great, but too many people in my community cannot afford those $200,000 houses. We need programs that meet our actual conditions and needs. When we were here last time, we heard a lot about how the city can't or won't prioritize low-income people. We heard the administration say that a lot of this money will already go to low-income people. To that, we say, let's guarantee that by putting it in writing, in legalese. We heard concerns about leaving out middle-income residents who are also struggling. To that, we say, we are not against expanding eligibility to people making a few dollars over the old income limits, as long as you can also guarantee resources to those who need it the most. The city has the resources to do both. There is no need to pit have-nots against the have-littles. There are many reasons why it is critical to prioritize low-income people. First, we heard last time that the city has a shortage of over 64,000 rental units for low-income people. This is the root of the housing crisis. If we can solve this problem, it will open up the market for everyone else. But more importantly, it is a basic moral principle that the poor shall be first, that we start by investing the most where the crisis has been greatest. A failure to do so, to do this, would be a failure of moral leadership. This situation is dire. Getting priced out of my neighborhood is simply not a political matter. It is an existential threat to the lives of black working-class people. This is why we must prioritize people making 30% or less of AMI. Yes, it is correct that everyone is feeling the burn of increased housing costs and the rising cost of living, but the poorest people have the most to lose at this time. This is why the city must serve them first. The city must invest in black working-class people if they expect us to become more engaged in our neighborhoods. The mayor's administration must do what is right. We must help those abandoned by the system first because we have suffered the greatest. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Would Ms. Sharon Teeger, Mr. Benjamin Clark, Ms. Serena Rose, and Ms., or Mr., G. Paul Blundell, please come forward.
Hi, Your Honor.
Alright. Will Carlos Booth, Federica Lightford, Michael Frolich, Seth Anderson Oberman, please come forward.
I need a minute to get his speech.
Hi, I'm Sharon. My name is Sharon Abantua Teeger. I am a single mother. I am a single mother living in the northeast Philadelphia in the Councilmember Phillips District. I am here today not just as one individual, but as a voice for many families like me, families who are struggling to survive, to find affordable housing, and to live in a safe, peaceful communities. I am also here as someone who has experienced firsthand the devastating impact on street violence when I lost my father, my child's father, to a senseless act of street violence right here in the city of Philadelphia. This tragedy changed, it changed my life forever. It broke my heart and it broke my family. But it also opened my eyes and made me realize that staying silent is no longer an option. We cannot continue to live in fear, straggling in poverty while our leaders look the other way. So this is why we need this home plan to prioritize safe, affordable housing for low-income families. Because stable housing is proven to help prevent crime and increase safety, public safety. My own experience has deepened my understanding of urgent need for stronger, more credible housing support systems for families who are straggling to rebuild their lives and to amid financial and emotional hardship. I am also here to strongly advocate that that majority of the funding to the home plan be allocated directly to the lowest-income families, specifically those earning under $30,000 per year. These households represent the most vulnerable population in our housing system, and we face the highest rates of homelessness and housing instability. Prioritizing these families is not only a matter of fairness, but also it's a necessary investment in the health, the safety, and the stability of these communities. We are ensuring that some of these resources, or most of these, majority of these resources, be directed where they are needed most. We can begin to close the gap between survival and stability for those who have long been overlooked. I urge the City Council, I urge the City Council and all its partners involved in the initiative to center equity and compassion, every fountain necessary to vote yes to support Councilmember Gauthier's amendment to protest funding for low-income housing.
Hi, afternoon. My name is Sean Moss. I'm not G. Paul. He couldn't be here today, so he asked me to read his speech, so I will do that now. And I quote, "Hello, my name is G. Paul Blundell, and I'm an Amazon warehouse worker, where I have worked for almost six years, as well as co-chair of the Philadelphia Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. A completely member-funded, volunteer-run organization with over 1,800 dues-paying members in Philly alone. Over the years, I have also helped organize tenants to demand improvement in their housing. All of these experiences have shown me that there is a housing crisis in Philadelphia and that the current home budget as it is is not going to fix it. The city is short more than 64,000 affordable units, with 12,000 more set to expire in the next 10 years. The mayor's campaign promise, which she has since gone back on, to build 30,000 affordable units would not cover half this deficit. Right now, half of renters and more than a quarter of homeowners are cost-burdened, spending more than 30% of their income on housing. Too many Philadelphians are making impossible choices between paying rent or paying for food, medicine, and childcare. Despite this, the mayor's current home budget hands over 30% of the initiative funds directly to private developers." That's right, yeah. "With no protections to guarantee that they'll actually use that money to create affordable housing. So without guarantees that funds will be used to preserve or create truly affordable housing, low-income renters will be forced to rent housing they struggle to afford, displacing workers who have just a little further up the rental ladder into properties they too struggle to afford. And the effect is a straight transfer of income from the working-class renters to landlords and developers, and to that I say shame. I have seen firsthand how lack of affordable housing helps to create the working poor. I see coworkers, coworkers who work full-time at Amazon, forced to live far away from their employment should there be too many bad backups on our highways, or too many missing buses from increasingly underfunded SEPTA. I see coworkers forced to take on roommates, or continue living with extended family into middle age, or even their senior years, or else bounce around between slumlord-run housing enduring terrible conditions and dangerous situations. And finally, the home budget should be used to address the crux of the housing crisis here in Philadelphia, the lack of deeply affordable housing. And so we call on City Council to support Councilmember Gauthier and Landau's budget amendment request to prioritize funding in the Home Initiative for those who need it most, and that would be about roughly 30% and less of area median income."
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, City Council. I'd like to first start with something that I read.
Sir, please state your name for the record.
For the record, my name is Carlos C. Booth, Senior. I stress the senior because I'm proud of my son.
Yes, sir. Please proceed with your testimony.
Now, if I may proceed, is okay?
Please proceed with your testimony.
Thank you very much. I don't know what the protocol is, my first time here, but I'm honored to be here. Thank you. In my readings this morning, I was moved by something that I read unexpectedly, but I had to be here. And this is a quote directly from the Bible. It says, "When the righteous prosper, the city rejoices. Through the blessings of the upright, a city is exalted." Now, that means us. See, because we're going through some changes right now. I didn't know what changes people were going through until I became a senior. Now, I realized there are two things that go on, basically because of an awareness of people in the community and my own building that I live in. There are differentiation between people. There are people like me, the seniors, I'm 68 years old, I'm a senior. But there are people in my building who are elders. Now, the elders are 80 and above. Now, at 68, they tease me because they say, you know, you are the youngster of the building. I'm honored by that because I'm there for them. When they need help, I'm there for them. But now who's going to be there to help all of us when we have a problem? I found out a little over a month ago that the developer for my particular building that I live in, and I'm in one of the Philadelphia Restoration Project buildings, is going to be sold. Yes, it's going to be sold. They don't care about us. We became income for them. No matter what they tell us, well, you know, if you don't like it, you can move. Well, if you don't like it, you can give back the money to the state and the city that you were taking it from. We are something that you are getting money from. These developers need to get off their duff and realize they're making it because of us. Now, what our concerns now are, now what happens when this building becomes sold? We can have one of maybe three things that can happen. One, we become displaced. Oh, that's such a nice word. We're gonna become homeless. That is a possibility. The other thing that can happen, we are subject to, they say, to what's going to go on, market rate. Oh, please, high tariff. Let's call it what it is, robbery. Okay? Don't give me nicety words. Let's keep it for what it is. Yes, I'm upset about that. I turned to a senior, I became a senior, I've been living at this restoration project now for five years, only to find out last month, you're gonna not be here another 10. What kind of mess is that? I don't get it. I don't get it. We need somebody to protect us. Now, see, what's going on, and I've assessed what's going on. I'm going to wind this up. But what I realize, one thing, and this one thing is very important, the seniors and elders, we are all victims of inflation. And people don't realize that, but they need to because they didn't make it this far without us.
My name is Federica Lightford, Grand Rising. The slums of Philadelphia are no accident. They are planned slums for the unregulated tenement manipulators in their mad scramble for profits. Use the Negro as a pawn and use the middle-class white families as suckers, making them pay at both ends. Philadelphia Tribune, Slum Analysis, 1935. I stood before City Council eight years ago about the same situation about housing, and here we are again, giving testimony about this situation that seems so difficult, but to me, it's not. I also live and reside in West Philadelphia in neighborhood restorations, which happens to be up for sale. To me, a safe, comfortable, and affordable home is restructuring the guidelines of gross incomes. The structure table is overwhelming, which does not allow for other essential needs. This is not affordable housing. The math is not mathing. Feeling safe is a lengthy list, but to prioritize a few, a home should be structurally sound, free from hazardous conditions, such as faulty plumbing and electricity, pest-free, lead-free paint, mold issues, and nuisance neighbors, to say the least. These are crucial matters depending upon the physical and emotional well-being of the tenement. This home housing plan seems to have some blueprint similarities of pre-1945 public housing. They too borrowed bonds to structure PHA housing. So I'm not optimistic at all about this. It needs to be reconsidered. It needs to be restructured. It's just, I'm not feeling it. I found out that neighborhood restoration was up for sale viewing an IG post from Councilmember Jamie Gauthier's page. The overwhelmingness of this news brought bad experience of being gentrified and displaced in 2016, 2017, and 2018. These occurrences were due to landlords who prioritized profit over maintaining their properties, unreasonable rent increases, and certain forms of intimidation. City Council should be willingly and wanting to get behind, trying to make it a better place for Philly. I mean, when I think about it... I mean, when I think about all the mayors, before Mayor Sherrell, I'm going back to Green, Mayor Green, like, the monies that have been allocated for housing seems to be just displaced. It just doesn't seem to be adding up. Connect the dots. You've listened to all the testimony of everybody in here. Connect the dots. Something is not right. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Seth Anderson Oberman. I'm a Germantown resident and the executive director of Reclaim Philadelphia. I'm here today because this housing crisis is personal. I was raised by a single black mother who worked multiple jobs, and even with all that, we didn't have stable housing. We bounced around, shared rooms, basements, family couches, and that kind of instability leaves a mark, and it follows you throughout life. That's why I'm speaking today, because housing should not be that hard. Housing is a human right. When the home plan was first introduced, we were told it would build thirty thousand units of affordable housing. But somewhere along the way, that shifted. Now, it's just thirty thousand units of housing, affordable or not. And for those of us paying attention, it feels an awful lot like the goalposts are shifting. This city doesn't need another trickle-down housing plan. That approach has failed poor and working-class people for decades. We need a people-first, bottom-up housing plan, one that starts where the need is the greatest. I understand everyone is feeling the pressure, but not everyone's standing at the edge of eviction or homelessness. If we were in an emergency room, and let's be real, this is a housing emergency, a triage nurse wouldn't treat someone with a sprained ankle before someone who's bleeding out. That's not how care works. That's not how justice works. Today, one in three renters and one in five homeowners in Philly are extremely low-income, earning less than thirty percent of the area median income. And the proposed home budget only guarantees two percent of funding for that group. Meanwhile, up to forty percent of the funds can go to people making six figures. That's not a housing plan for all, because it's a plan that leaves out the people that are most at risk. We're not denying there's a need across income levels, but we're saying we have to start with those who have nowhere else to turn. That's how you build a housing system that works for everyone. And we know the city has the money. There's one point two billion dollars in surplus. What we're missing is the political will. If we taxed big developers and corporate landlords their fair share, we could fund housing that's truly affordable to the people who need it most. That's how you expand the pie. I heard someone earlier say that. That's how we expand the pie. Thanks to people power and the leadership of council members who've stepped up, we've already seen some progress. Programs like Built to Last and Basic Systems are getting more funding. And that didn't just happen. People fought for that, and we thank council for standing up for that. Now, we're asking you to go further. Amend the home plan. Guarantee funding for those most in need. Deliver the housing justice this city has been waiting for, calling for, and is now fighting for, because no one in Philadelphia, especially not our children, our elders, our disabled, our essential workers, should be treated as expendable. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Would Miguel Johnson, Ms. Queen Judith Robinson, Jackie Zaneri, and Patrick Houston, please come forward. Again, that's Miguel Johnson, Queen Judith Robinson, Jackie Zaneri, and Patrick Houston.
Good afternoon. My name is Jackie Zaneri. I am a staff attorney in the Housing Justice Project at the Senior Law Center. I am here today to voice our support for ensuring that the home plan targets funding to low-income Philadelphia residents, deeply affordable housing, prioritizes existing housing programs, and provides financial support for tenant programs. At Senior Law Center, we seek justice for older adults using the power of the law. We provide free legal assistance to thousands of older people each year, including victims of elder abuse and financial exploitation, older homeowners and tenants facing housing crises and homelessness, grandparents raising grandchildren, and older individuals facing undue neglect, undue or neglect and guardianship. Our housing justice team provides representation to tenants facing legal issues, as well as to homeowners, for mortgage foreclosure assistance, mortgage modification, correcting deed and title problems, and resolving property tax delinquencies. Our clients need their housing to be affordable, stable, and safe. Many of them live in housing that is unaffordable to them, or is in disrepair, and that jeopardizes their health and safety. I want to give you a snapshot from our client data of who is getting evicted, who is living in substandard housing, who is in danger of losing their existing homeownership. For our homeowner clients, sixty-eight point two percent had a household income that was less than thirty percent AMI. Eighty-seven point nine percent had an income of less than fifty percent AMI. And for our tenant clients, seventy-three point ninety-one percent had a household income of less than thirty percent AMI, and ninety-four point nine percent had an income of fifty percent AMI or less. These are tenant clients who are not in safe housing and are looking to move out. They're facing issues like substantial mold growth, collapsing structures, no heat. They will stay on wait lists for years at a time, sometimes staying in housing that is hazardous to their health, often while paying rents that they can't really afford. Ensuring that more deeply affordable housing is created ensures that they don't need to remain in that substandard housing. At the same time, many of our clients would benefit from increased funding to programs such as basic systems repair, restore, repair, renew, and hopefully eliminating obstacles to qualify for those with tangled titles. Finally, we ask that you ensure that more funding goes to programs that assist tenants. Our clients use programs like homelessness prevention, tenant-based shallow rent, the anti-displacement fund, and Fresh Start PHL. There is always greater need for these programs that they're able to take on. Many of these programs are lifelines for tenants. Financial assistance to pay back rent may be available for tenant one week, the next week it is not, and then maybe a month later it's available again, and then it isn't. So for many tenants right now, getting that assistance they need is a matter of luck. So in short, when you're deciding how to allocate this public funding, we ask that you direct it to where the need is greatest. Thank you.
Sir, please state your name for the record and begin with your testimony.
Hi, my name is Majul K. Johnson. I'm a resident of Point Breeze, who's in one-nine-one-four-six zip code, which is unfortunately today, hey, one of the most gentrified zip codes in the entire United States. The housing, housing plan hand as proposed, whose lacks clarity. We've been told that had the funds, that the funds will go automatically to the people who need it most. If that is the case, simply codify it, hide it, and make it take it go where it's supposed to go, as a guarantee. Government does not just have the power to incentivize, it has the power to mandate. And this is an area where we can't afford to simply say we're going to let it go where it's supposed to go, because we don't know that for certain. Even if we have the records to say that it will, as has been claimed, we need to guarantee it. What we can have here in this city, in this housing plan, I see the potential of a true housing plan for all, if the proper amendments, such as those proposed by Councilmember Gautier, are made. If we can build, hold upon this city's professed ideals, it claims to be a city of brotherly love and sisterly affection. Yes, that's the definition of our city's name, but at the same time, it needs to make that policy not simply a slogan. Again, these amendments have the potential to turn this housing proposal into something that truly lifts Philadelphians up, rather than pushes Philadelphians out. How? If we're going to truly have a neighborhood or have a city as a whole that is going to be one that grows together, we need to have a housing, housing plan that actually focuses on the people who need it most. If they ask us why I hide the poorest most, this answer is simple, because the poorest need it most. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Patrick Houston. I'm North Philly born and raised, and currently live in North Philly. Today, I'm testifying on behalf of the Housing Equity Repair and Electrification Coalition for Climate Justice, here for climate justice. We're a coalition of eighteen community organizations, workforce and community development partners, and climate justice groups across Philadelphia advocating for safe, healthy, affordable, fossil-free housing for all. That we are even having this conversation about how to direct millions of public dollars to support housing preservation and development reflects a big shift in the right direction in our city. We commend the councils and the mayor's attention to this issue. But we want to make sure we get this right. And right now, too little of the home funds are guaranteed to directly support renters, Philly residents in the lowest income brackets, and the folks on the waiting list. We are asking council to ensure the final budget maximizes allocations for these folks who are most at risk of being pushed into homelessness. Specifically, we are asking for several adjustments. Ensure that the eligible applicants sitting on the waiting list get served first. Guarantee prioritization of Philadelphians with greatest need, namely the one in three renters and one in five homeowner households in Philadelphia who make thirty percent AMI or less. Proactively address the forthcoming expiration of thousands of housing vouchers by increasing funding for affordable housing preservation now, and make sure renters aren't sold short. Yes, we should protect small-scale homeowners. Yes, we must also protect more than half of our residents who rent as well. To do so, we should increase funding for tenant-based shallow rent, the anti-displacement fund, Fresh Start Philadelphia, and homelessness prevention. These requests would not pin the have-nots against the have-a-littles. In fact, they recognize that if the poorest folks aren't adequately supported, then we are all worse off as a city. We are bound up in this together. We should do the right thing and maximize support for our neighbors with greatest need. We recognize the support that several council, several council have shown in supporting these priorities. Thank you. Please continue that support, and we also ask other council members to please join your colleagues in supporting these amendments. And finally, just want to name that I have here hundreds of signatures from across Philadelphia, from Philadelphians across the city, in support of making these necessary amendments to make sure those with the greatest need are prioritized and the funds for them are guaranteed. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Queen Judith Robinson here, born and bred in North Philadelphia, celebrating forty years in the real estate business. I'm a real estate professional. Thirty-five years as a licensed real estate broker. And I want to say that housing is shelter. All housing choices are income-based. When we qualify a renter or buyer, it's based on income. So everything is based on income. So this word affordability, who are we talking to and what are we talking about? Historic knowledge is important. So I'm your historian. Mayor Streets Administration floated a bond, three hundred and eighty-five million dollars back in, and it was the Neighborhood Transformation Initiative, NTI. I was there then, I'm here now. It's a benefit to getting old, okay? Substantial amount of that money was spent on demolition of salvageable properties. I was here advocating against that. Strawberry Mansion North Philly was the prototype area, and lo and behold, PHA was the replacement. So we went from homeownership, using eminent domain, to PHA on choice land near Fairmont Park. So fast forward to now, and here we are talking about eight hundred million dollars bond being floated. So I'm your expert, your community expert, the land use historian. Let's start with what we already have, existing houses, opportunities. We lost a major opportunity on Historic Diamond Street, putting a police station there when we had an overlay, a historic corridor overlay, okay? Since nineteen eighty-six, Philadelphia's first historic district corridor designated by the Historic Commission. We lost that opportunity. The benefit would have been replica of these houses here, okay? Real handsome houses. That was the benefit. So follow me, please. So Philadelphia Housing Authority is one of the most horribly managed agencies in this city, in this city. They have more vacant properties and land blighting communities throughout the whole of Philadelphia. I'm going to say, to be continued, because the low-vibration agenda that's being pushed, where they just purchased a twenty-four million-dollar property, didn't do a home, didn't do an inspection. Preservation of existing properties is important, adaptive reuse is important. There's even a tax credit for adaptive reuse. We need to protect our historic properties. It's a historic city we're living in, and we need to protect that. Homelessness budget, I don't hear you all talking very much about that, but it's ballooned over the past twenty years. Scattered sites, you could have instant homeownership with scattered sites. I helped this family purchase a property, and it was a hell of a process. Tangled titles, we need cultural competency. Have a lot of African-Americans who are in a major crisis as it relates to tangled titles. Who is even tracking the success at all, okay? A lot of money is going into the same legal agencies, but we're not getting the kind of results we should. I will finish it all by saying transparency and openness is important. No one of us is smarter than all of us, especially me, y'all, okay? Yeah. Agreements made behind closed doors and rolled out for hearings is not true inclusion. Thank you very much.
Council President Kenyatta Johnson, thank you for your leadership in convening this hearing today, to my great friend, Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson, and certainly to Frankfurt's own Councilwoman Ketsey Lazada.
Sir-
I'm grateful-
Sir, pardon the interruption. Please state your name for the record.
I'm about to. I'm in the next paragraph. I'm grateful for the heart and courage you bring to the neighborhoods we serve. My name is Reverend Jonathan A. Mason Senior, and I serve as the pastor of the Northeast Baptist Church and president, and president of the Northeast Baptist Church Community Development Corporation. And as you can hear, this issue is so important to us that many of my members showed up today to be a part of this process. We represent a community that knows both the weight of hardship and the strength of hope. Scripture reminds us in Isaiah fifty-eight twelve, that you shall be called the repairer of the breach, the restorer of the streets to dwell in. This is not just a scripture text, it's a mandate. It's a call for all of us, especially those entrusted with authority, to step into the broken places and bring restoration. In Frankfurt, this mandate is not theoretical. Our CDC is actively developing forty-six affordable housing units right now. Real homes for real people, rising up on blocks where families are struggling to hold on. We did not enter this work because it was easy. We entered it because the need was undeniable, and doing nothing was not an option. And that's why I stand before you today to support Mayor Parker's home initiative and the first drawdown under consideration. My issue is one of timing and delay. Philadelphia cannot afford to hesitate. We cannot delay investment in a moment when housing instability is touching every zip code in this city. I sit with families who are one rent payment away from being out of their house. I minister to seniors who are living with leaking roofs and broken heating systems- I minister to seniors who are living with leaking roofs and broken heating systems. I watch children trying to learn when they gotta move every year. They cannot wait for the perfect. They need progress and access to capital right now. They need action, and they need it now. The Home Initiative provides the tools, the resources, to build, preserve, stabilize, and strengthen housing all across this city. I'm almost done. It empowers neighborhood-based organizations who have boots on the ground and a heart for the people. Council members, this drawdown is not just a financial decision, it's a moral one. It's an opportunity to be the repairs of the breach, our scripture calls us to be. So today, I encourage you to move forward, to move forward, understanding that we can make changes later, and let us show Philadelphia that this is not just a campaign promise, but it's a deliverable. May God guide your deliberations. Philly needs this right now.
My name is Pastor W. Lonnie Herndon. Good afternoon, Council President Johnson and all of council members, our very own Jamie Gardig. God bless you. Thank you for this opportunity today to stand before you, not just as a pastor in West Philadelphia, but really as a servant of the people. I, I really don't get to choose who I care for when someone walks through the doors of the church, regardless of their struggle, their background, or their status. I am called to shepherd or pastor everyone. And that is exactly what Mayor Cheryl Parker is doing for our city. Her Home Plan is not just a policy document. It is a holistic, comprehensive, and compassionate approach to lifting the city of Philadelphia, just like a pastor can't focus on one part of the flock. The mayor can't focus on only one population. She must, and she does, focus on the whole city. One of the most transformational pieces of the Home Plan is the commitment to invest in housing over the next four years. This investment will produce and preserve at least thirty thousand housing units across Philadelphia. Think about what thirty thousand homes represent. More stability for families, more opportunity for young people, more dignity for seniors, more affordability for working parents trying to stay in the neighborhoods in which they live. And let me give you some real examples. A grandmother in Southwest who wants to stay in the home she raised her children in, this plan keeps her in it. A young couple in North Philadelphia who wants to become the first-time homeowners, but they're missing the income, cut off by a few dollars. This plan expands opportunities for them. A working man in West Philadelphia who goes to work every day but still feels like housing is slipping far out of his reach, this plan does not leave him behind. This is not about helping one side of the city, this is about strengthening every side of the city. Affordability with fairness. Now, let me speak plainly before I go. I believe in taking care of the less fortunate. Jesus commands us to do so, and yes, we must help those who struggle the most, but we also must be fair. We can't penalize the hard-working families who get up at five AM to go to work every day, pay their taxes, and still don't qualify because they make five dollars over the limit. You know those families. Some of you may be those families. Mayor Parker sees you. This plan acknowledges you, and this is how we build One Philly, a united city. And now, I want to say this, we don't do this by dividing people, not by lifting up one group while forgetting another, but by making sure everyone has access to a safe, affordable, quality home in a neighborhood full of jobs, opportunities, and amenities. A home that is more than four walls. It, it's safety, it's, it's stability, it's where families grow, it's where children dream, where communities thrive. The Home Plan strengthens neighborhoods, improves access, improves access to jobs, upgrades public spaces, and ensures that every Philadelphian, from the poorest to the working middle class, can live with dignity. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Could Kenesha Houston, Lori Peterson, Annette Collier, Tia Nguyen, please come forward? Again, Kenesha Houston, Lori Peterson, Annette Collier, Tia Nguyen, please come forward. I'll also call Andre Dawkins, John Malloy, Delina White, please come forward. I'll also call Mary Gonzalez, Vincent Reyna, Stacy Moore. I'll call Bonita Cummings. Glad to have you. Welcome back. Andrew Fishkov. Pastor Lonnie Herndon. Pastor Jonathan Mason. Sir, you may state your name for the record and begin with your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Ben Clark, and I'm an attorney at Community Legal Services. As council members know, we're a nonprofit legal services organization, provides free legal services to low-income neighbors of ours in Philadelphia. And as part of the Energy and Utilities Team, I help low-income Philadelphians maintain access to life-essential utility services, including by getting access to our city's home repair programs. I'm here today for two reasons. First, to thank this council for increasing funding for our city's Hallmark Home Repair Programs and the most recent version of the Home Program Statement. And second, to urge you all to provide these programs with the support that they need to clear their wait lists. As you all know, the need for home repairs runs deep and wide in our city, and at CLS, we've represented nearly a thousand low-income homeowners at or below about forty percent of the area median income with serious repair needs in just the last five years. Our various teams assist these clients with a wide range of legal needs, from tangled titles to child custody issues to utility debt. And so this means that we're uniquely positioned to see how a repair need today can cause a crisis tomorrow. But the problem is that with Built to Last and BSRP's current wait lists, a repair need today will not be addressed tomorrow, or the next day, or the next month, because the demand for these programs is so overwhelming that it takes at least a year for most applicants to receive assistance. And this means that every week, I have heartbreaking conversations with clients on the program wait lists. I have to tell them they'll just have to find a way to live another day with a broken furnace, a caved-in roof, or a sparking outlet. At CLS, we do what we can to help folks find stability in the meantime, but the truth is that, as a client told me just last week, when your homes face critical repairs, things just spiral, and it gets hard to keep going. Your furnace breaks, and the stand-in space heaters you put up to stay warm spike your electric bill. You put a tarp on your roof, but the cold and water still find ways inside, and your sparking outlets threaten your children's safety. I work closely with and deeply admire BSRP and Built to Last program staff. I've seen how hard they work to meet the urgent needs in our city, but with the nearly ten thousand Philadelphians on the wait lists, increasing income eligibility for programs like BSRP without first clearing the wait list only threatens further delays and confusion for our city's most in need families. Our low-income neighbors are already in a dangerous holding pattern with snap cuts and delays to lie heap, but you can take steps so they aren't waiting in the same patterns for home repairs. So I thank you again for providing funding to these vital programs, and I urge you to take two steps. First, to provide the wait list should be cleared before any income eligibility goes into effect, and second, to ensure that at least eighty percent of BSRP funding goes to households at or below sixty percent of the area median income. So help make sure that funding helps those most in need, and those who've already waited months or years can get the relief they so deserve. Thank you.
Good afternoon, to the chair and committee members. My name is Bonita Cummings, and I am the Director of Strawberry Mansion Community Concern. And I would say from Wednesday, I believe we were here November the twelfth, to today, that I can say, I believe we all can agree, we all can agree that the only thing that's constant is change. The change and the question is whether it'll change from good for good, or whether it'll change for bad, or whether it'll change for balance. I'm here because the annual program statement, and this is Bill Resolution Number two-five-zero-nine-five-five, the annual budget, the annual program statement and budget for home, for the Home Plan, still moves money without moving power to the people most affected. First, community voice is missing, the affected. The project review team has no required community seats, yet it can greenlight reallocations and early spending that is governance without consent. Second, the AMI structure skews too high for neighborhoods at greatest risk. The APS and B lets multiple programs serve households at a hundred percent, so a hundred and twenty percent AMI, for example, One Philly Mortgage, greater than a hundred and twenty percent AMI, and employer-assisted housing, hundred and fifteen percent AMI. While our deepest needs are thirty percent and fifty percent or less AMI, this is not affordable for the families being displaced. Third, land transfers can still impact gardens, pocket parks, and tree canopy without binding parcel-level protections. The APS and B, B's Exhibit Four identifies no properties at this time, which means the public is asked to approve funding before seeing which blocks are targeted, no meaningful notice, no due process. Fourth, Section Three's one-thousand parcel authority effectively relies on a district letter instead of a transparent citywide community concurrence process. One signature cannot substitute for the people who live on the block. Philadelphia is no longer ranked the nation's poorest big city, so let's stop using affordable housing as a brand while approving budgets that don't reach the poorest Philadelphians. I'm asking you to condition approved on five simple guardrails. Add community seats to the project review team and require public noted meetings. Deep affordability floors, at least thirty-five percent of homes at thirty percent AMI, twenty-five percent and fifty percent AMI, weighted average sixty percent AMI, and consider what bond subsidy above eighty percent AMI, okay? Parcel levels transparency before any transfers, OPA numbers maps, current used flag gardens, canopies, and a thirty-day public comment window. A community concurrence test, conflict affidavits from RCOs, two noticed meetings, a nearest neighbor petition safeguards, and documented responses. Open space canopy protections and anti-concentration camps per block face and census tract. And if these conditions can be adopted, that would be a win-win. And as I stated earlier, I think we're really all in agreement. It's just how we do it, and how we do it has to be a balance and not this fighting back and forth between each other. We need to be able to protect the poorest of the people that need to be protected, and everybody needs to plan for if you make more money. What's the problem there? I, I'd like to know what's the problem? And, and how are we solving that problem for people who is already at a hundred thousand, a hundred fifteen thousand dollars per year? How, you know, housing counseling, how are we really working with these people? So I think we can work it out, we just have to be able to make sure council has its power. So that's my thing. Keep your power, city council. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Froelich. I'm the managing attorney of the Home Ownership and Consumer Rights Unit at Community Legal Services. The Home Initiative will bring historic investment in addressing our city's affordable housing crisis that directly affects our clients. Others today have, have spoken much more eloquently and passionately than I about the needs of these housing programs, so I wanted to focus on just one specific and sometimes overlooked program that's part of the Home Initiative, and that's the One Philly Mortgage Program. The One Philly Mortgage Program is a new Home Initiative, initiative that is designed to help first-time homeowners who, to obtain affordable thirty-year fixed-rate loans with reduced down payments and low interest rates. And this is an important goal, and the One Philly Mortgage Program presents a, an innovative approach, but it would be a missed opportunity if the administration and city council did not use the One Philly Mortgage Program to ensure that these mortgages are also offered to borrowers who are at risk of losing their homes and are not being served by the banks and the others in the existing mortgage market. In particular, borrowers should be able to qualify for the One Philly Mortgage Program if they need to refinance out of these predatory rent-to-own agreements that are everywhere in our city and that our homeowners oftentimes get duped into taking out. They ought to be able to qualify for the One Philly Mortgage Program if they're facing a mortgage, facing a foreclosure on these so-called zombie mortgages, these mortgages which were taken out twenty or more years ago and are now coming back to haunt them in a foreclosure. There's no other loss mitigation or no other market or option that's available for people facing a foreclosure from these zombie mortgages, but the One Philly Mortgage Program could be the solution. Heirs who are seeking to pay off their deceased parents' reverse mortgages, or heirs who are seeking to resolve their own tangled titles by purchasing the legal interests of their co-owners. Many of these homeowners have no other options to save their homes, but the One Philly Mortgage Program, if properly designed, could be their solution. Again, thank you for the opportunity to testify this afternoon.
Thank you for your testimony. Would Mr. Thomas Blackwell, Ms. Sheila Hagues, Ms. Kimberly Lloyd, Ms. Nadia Graves, and Ms. Sherry Richardson, please come forward. Thank you. Ma'am, please state your name for the record and begin with your testimony.
I am Kimberly Lloyd, L-L-O-Y-D. I am the president, CEO of Ogont Avenue Revitalization Corporation, finally known as ORC. Good day, council members, and I acknowledge Councilman Phillips, who represents the district that we serve. I am in support of the Home Plan. In the nineteen eighties, I became passionate about housing due to my classmate at Edward Bach. Her parents became disengaged due to losing their job. The entire family became homeless, and my classmate subsequently came to live with my family so that she could continue to go to school. This passion turned into a career as a corporate finance banker with over forty years of banking finance experience. The Home Plan is groundbreaking on many levels. As a former banker, we never looked to Philadelphia to do something of this nature. Due to the funding, Philly has looked as, and taken the opportunity to do a true program to help those who cannot afford market-rate housing or wait to qualify for affordable housing. Although the Home Program is still being debated, it is still groundbreaking. ORC serves the West Oak Lane uptown neighborhood. As a developer and landlord, the hope is for the development of a hundred percent affordable housing apartments, or an opportunity to purchase a home that does not decrease your income or the value of what you have in your bank to be able to have a fixed type of income or the value of what you have in your bank to be able to have a fixed type of home mortgage. And thus, through this program, jobs in sustainable neighborhoods should be created. I hope the testimonies today will compel those to do the right thing. Again, I am in support of this bill, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, please state your name for the record and begin with your testimony.
Good afternoon, council members and fellow Philadelphians. My name is Thomas William Blackwell, VI. I am a resident of West Philadelphia. I am a resident of the third Councilmanic District, which our wonderful leader, Council Member Jamie Gaudier. So hello, council member. First, I would like to say that I am in support of Mayor Parker's home plan. As President of the Blackwell Culture Alliance and member of the Seventh Senatorial District PA State Committee, I serve our community daily through food distributions, anti-violence initiatives, and outreach programs. I have carefully reviewed Mayor Sherrell Parker's home plan, as many of us seek effective solutions to our city's ongoing housing crisis. This initiative provides substantial support for families facing challenges in securing safe, affordable housing. This crisis has persisted due in part to city council's approval of luxury developments that drive up costs displacing long-term residents and transforming neighborhoods into areas unaffordable for locals. We cannot continue this way. Families cannot even lay their heads at night and properly care for their loved ones when over half of Philadelphians spend more than thirty percent of their income on housing, with nearly sixty-five thousand low-income households lacking affordable options. Cut the excuses and stop forcing people to choose sides. Support everyone in this city. The home plan addresses this by preserving thousands of existing affordable units, funding deeply affordable housing for households earning twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand annually, and providing supportive housing with services for the homeless, seniors, and individuals with disabilities. Additional programs such as restore, repair, renew for lost, for low-cost home repairs and eviction prevention offer critical, critical, critical stability for vulnerable renters. The One Philly Mortgage Program facilitates homeownership, working families, for working families like my neighbors requiring three percent down payment, no private mortgage insurance, and eligibility up to one hundred and twenty percent of area median income on thirty-year fixed rate loans. While I acknowledge concerns from advocates and certain officials that plan insufficiently serves the lowest income residents, I must ask, what alternative proposal do you offer to resolve Philadelphia's affordable housing shortage? It is perplexing that some council members advocate for affordable housing while opposing the home plan. How can one endorse its goals yet reject its implementation? Residents like myself seek clarity, is a viable alternative forthcoming, and merely objections without solutions.
Sir, I'd ask you to wind it up.
Okay. Y'all asking me to wind it up, though? Listen. Withholding funding from home would exuberate, would exert, would exert evictions, accelerate housing deterioration and displacement, and increase homelessness particularly amid impending federal reductions, burdening taxpayers with billions in crisis response rather than a hundred ninety-five million targeted at renters, repairs, and stability. Philadelphia requires immediate action. Let us collaborate to refine, advance, and advance this plan for more equitable city. Council members, I urge you to unite, enhance it, and improve home funding without delay. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, please state your name for the record and begin with your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name, my name is Sheila Hags, and I'm a resident in the West Philadelphia area. And I'm, I'm here today testifying for myself and my husband. Last year, in October two thousand twenty-four, our heater went out. It was extremely cold, and me and my husband, we needed heat. We are on a fixed income and could not purchase a new heater on our money that we get. We called many places for assistance and finally reached out to the Action Center Number Three that is part of the mayor's Neighborhood Community Action Center program. They were available to help, and they pointed us to the heater hotline ran by the NG Coordinating Agency. I learned that the ECA is supported and funded by PHDC, which ultimately receives its funding from the City of Philadelphia. Through the heater hotline, me and my husband were able to receive a brand-new heater with a ten-year warranty. We are now able to have comfortable heating and warmth in our home. I note that there are so many seniors like me and my husband who need these services and would ask that the city council would not only pass this funding, but do it as soon as possible. These programs are necessary in our city, and so many people would be lost without them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Please state your name for the record and begin with your testimony.
Hello, I'm, hello, I'm Nadia Graves, and I am from the Concessing Neighborhood in Southwest Philadelphia, the third Councilmanic District. Today, I've heard every day working-class people from Philadelphia come together and talk about one thing, not being displaced from our neighborhoods. And we're doing that because we believe in housing for all, long-term affordable housing for working people. And by working people, I mean people who work to live, not people who profit from tax breaks and tax abatements in our rent, because people like that are developers and corporations. And shame on anyone who tried to put have-nots against have-littles, renters against homeowners while protecting developers and corporations. There has been a pitting of working people against each other while hardly having a conversation about how the home plan prioritizes developers and corporations who are running away with the bag while working-class people continue to go back and forth about whether we deserve help or not based on our incomes. If any of us stopped working today, we will die of starvation, because there's not enough help for working people. The home plan intended to be help for working people? So is this about help or is it about austerity? Everyday working people have came here and said, we need to pass a housing plan that expands access to housing while guaranteeing resources for the people who need it the most. Two percent of this home plan going to the poorest Philadelphians, when thirty percent of the Philadelphians make under thirty thousand dollars is ridiculous, and the second, as of this year, second poorest city in the country. Philly does have the funding. Philly does not have a lack of funding. We have a lack of political integrity. People who protect developers, corporations, and pit homeowners and renters against each other. Prioritizing low income doesn't leave working families behind. It in fact protects working families and keeps us in our city. So we urge you to consider the amendments and pass them, because working-class people in Philadelphia are the heart, the blood, and culture of this city, and we deserve to stay here.
It's my turn. My name is Sheree Richardson. I'm sixty-one. I was born and raised in Brewery Town, and right now, my neighborhood don't look the same, because it's been gentrified also.
You said Brewery Town?
Uh-uh.
In North Philly.
Yeah. Twain Knife and Girard.
Yeah.
Boxers Brothers, yeah. But anyway, so I sat here, I sat in here, I heard, we all heard all kinds of testimonies in all kinds of ways, and I know you guys don't really want to keep hearing that, because, yeah. But maybe I could sum it all up. The face of the homeless looks like me. They don't carry all of their life in a shopping cart around the streets. The face of the homeless looks like me. A single parent working hard to keep clothes on our children, bags and shoes on their feet. The face of the homeless looks like me. We're not all begging on the streets. The face of the homeless is working two to three, nine to fives, just to survive. The face of the homeless doesn't always sleep on vents. They sleep in cars or other people's houses when they can't pay their mortgage or rent. That's me. I did it. The face of the homeless nowadays doesn't look the same. The face of the homeless is only an address changed. I wrote that poem, I sat in a meeting with Brewery Town and Shaweswood Coalition one day, and yeah, I just wrote that. I'm not going to sit here and tell y'all how I was homeless, how I was a victim of a lot of these things that these people just sat up here and said. I'm not going to do that, because we didn't hear it all. Now, I could say whatever I want. You guys going to sway whatever, which way? You need to sway, sway, whatever. But I need to say this in closing. All I ask, uh-uh, wait a minute, I'm, wait, 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 I wrote something else, and I don't see it. Give me one minute. But I wrote something to kind of sum all of this up. All I ask for is our just do. I'm sure that a lot of you city council members that's sitting here today probably was in our place, was in the same trousers and the same things at one point where I'm at. But somebody gave you guys a chance, a chance to change your destiny. Give us the chance. Help us to see better days as God has blessed you and your families to now live out your better days. Let me be the voice, the one voice that speaks for the mentally homeless families that live in poverty. I am, we are the face of the homeless.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any other witnesses to testify on this resolution?
Any other witnesses?
Hearing none. Sir, please state your name for the record and begin with your testimony.
Thank you. Andrew Frishkopf, Executive Director of LISC Philadelphia. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on behalf of the Home Annual Program Statement and Budget. Local Initiative Support Corporation, or LISC, is a national community development intermediary that has invested more than thirty-two billion dollars across the country, including six hundred ninety-five million here in Philadelphia, supporting the creation and preservation of ninety-seven affordable homes and apartments here in the city. Among our many local housing initiatives, LISC convenes the Preservation Network and leads the Nonprofit Preservation Initiative. The Preservation Network is a cross-sector coalition of more than forty public, private, and nonprofit organizations and agencies, all committed to preserving and protecting of publicly assisted affordable rental properties in Philadelphia. The Nonprofit Preservation Initiative is a collaborative model designed to preserve at-risk, nonprofit-owned affordable rental housing in the city while providing financial stability for residents and sustainability and prosperity for building owners and for neighborhoods. I want to thank Mayor Parker, City Council President Johnson, and all the members of city council for advancing the Home Initiative to this point. Please don't stop now. It is December. I wrote that, it was November. It is December, it's getting colder, and our housing conditions are getting worse each passing day. Please approve the Home Program Statement and Budget so that we can get moving on building and preserving the thirty thousand affordable homes that Philadelphians need. And please keep your eyes on that prize, thirty thousand new and preserved affordable homes. Please prioritize these bond funds for production and preservation of affordable homes for lower-income Philadelphians. We are going into debt up to eight hundred million dollars plus interest to fund the Home Initiative. We need to ensure we get the biggest bang for the buck out of these funds. We will be judged by how many homes we build and preserve and how affordable they are for the people who need them most. City investments in production and preservation of affordable housing can address multiple housing needs and leverage an array of other state and federal private funds. As I'm running to the end of my time, I want to highlight in particular the needs that are right in front of us, including the potential loss of nine hundred twenty-five neighborhood restoration units in West and Southwest Philadelphia, and the continuing loss of single-family homes to out-of-town investors who are taking them out of the stock for low and moderate income home buyers. These are among the priorities that the Home Initiative can and must address. We are all here to work alongside you and the mayor. Just give us the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify at this hearing on this resolution today? Thank you.
Being there, no further questions from members of the committee and no other witnesses on the list to testify, I will ask if there is anyone else present in this hearing who wishes to offer testimony in Resolution Number two five zero nine five five. Hearing none, I want to thank all of you for taking time out of your schedule and being here today to testify. We will now go into our public meeting to consider the action to be taken on Resolution Number two five zero nine five five. Mr. Christmas, will you please call the row to take attendance?
Councilman Squilla. Council Lady Gaudier. Councilman Jones. Councilman Young. Councilman Driscoll. Council Lady Lazada. Council Lady Bass. Councilman Phillips. Councilman O'Neill. Council Lady Gilmore Richardson. Councilman Thomas. Councilman Harity. Council Lady Ahmad. Council Lady Landau. Council Lady Brooks. Councilman O'Rourke. Council President Johnson.
Present. I recognize the President of the quorum, this chair recognizes Councilman Gilmore Richardson for an amendment to Resolution Number two five zero nine five five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. President. I offer an amendment to Resolution Number two five zero nine five five. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of the committee, and I move for its adoption.
The chair notes to the record that Councilmember Jim Harity seconds the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the amendment to Resolution Number two five zero nine five five is adopted. The chair recognizes Councilman Gilmore Richardson for motion on Resolution Number two five zero nine five five as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Resolution Number two five zero nine five five as amended. Be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jim Harity and Councilman Jamie Gaudier seconds the motion. That has been moved and property seconded, the Resolution Number two five zero nine five five as amended, be reported from this committee with a favorable recommendation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and Resolution Number two five zero nine five five as amended, be reported from this committee with favorable recommendation. Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, as we are about to do this vote, offer a few closing thoughts on the matter. I appreciated my colleagues in the gospel and in the field coming forward today to offer a public testimony and comment, and I just could not let it go without just adding something alongside that. The prophet Isaiah says, "Come, brethren, let us reason together." There is this phrase within the tradition called the preferential option for the poor. The concept of the option conveys a recognition that in life, because it is time-bound, as Dr. Mason referenced, you must make an option. You must make a choice. We don't have time or means for everything that we want, because we are time-bound. So we have to make options. That's not in question. What's in question, what has been spoken to a bit today, is the criteria for making an option. What informs the options we make? We make an option for the poor because of time. People are dying every day, and poor people are often the first to die, which is why we prefer to opt for the poor. They are also the global majority, who often don't have enough food or medicine or housing for tomorrow. The God logic there then is that if you affirm that God is life, then you contend for life and for living and for livelihood and against death before its time. We choose the poor, not because the poor are good, but because God is, and God chooses them, directly from the Directly from the gospels, not even just from the gospels, from the mouth of the Gospel Himself, Jesus. He says, "If you love me, feed my sheep, and whatsoever you do for the least of these, you do unto me." So yes, as pastors, certainly, you don't necessarily get to choose who you help when they come to the door, but we are encouraged by the Master Himself to prefer and to opt for helping the poorest first, to prioritize them first, which we have heard echo time after time by public testimony throughout this day, that this framing, this consistent framing, it feels very Trumpian, where we keep repeating having the have-nots against the have-a-little-bits, and we have said over and over again, "That's not what we're doing." People are saying, "Listen, it's fine. We need to help everybody." But we do make options for the poor. We prioritize them so that they are insured to get help. They have the least amount of time, as opposed to the middle class and the upper class, who may be able to coast on their reserves. The poor do not. Their situation is urgent, their matters are urgent, and that's why we do that. That having been said, at the end of this day, I would argue that this isn't just a policy disagreement. In a way, it's a bet. A massive one. We're betting the next 20 to 30 years of Philadelphia's future on a financing scheme that gives away revenue that we do not have, while taking on debt, the full cost of which we cannot see. And somehow, in the middle of that gamble, the people who are struggling the most, the people who are most in need of what we are trying to do, and I do say it is a good effort to make sure that we tackle this housing crisis, hat tip to the administration for even mentioning it. The families, though, under 30% AMI, are told there's no room for them in the very programs, that their tax dollars, their neighborhoods, and their futures are being leveraged to build. If this is our long-term strategy, then we are building a city for someday, somewhere, for somebody else, not for the Philadelphians who need it right now. So, I just wanted to add that. Again, I appreciate the efforts of the administration getting here, but there's a reason why we contend so fiercely. For the poorest and the least of these, the gospel charges us to do that. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gaultier.
Thank you, Council President, for the opportunity to say a few words, and for your steady leadership throughout this entire process. I also want to thank our council, because I think we took a very important vote today. Also would like to offer thanks to everyone who took time out of their day to give public comment, especially those who came back for a second time. Our city is stronger because you were here today using your voices. I'm glad that we came back together today to continue our review of this important legislation. And I'm also glad that today we kept our focus on the true face of Philadelphia's housing crisis, because for the home plan to work, it must start by helping those who are most burdened in today's housing market, including many of our public servants. I also wanted to talk a little bit about this mysterious concept of AMI, because sometimes I think we lose focus on who the poor and working class are in the city of Philadelphia. Base income for our public school teachers is about 50% of area median income. Sanitation workers start at about 40%. And I know the assumption is that deed-restricted affordable housing mostly houses seniors or others on fixed incomes, but the truth is that full-time union employees like city clerks, 3-1-1 operators, and med techs also live here. When these working families have housing that they can actually afford, they free up the units they are currently stretching to rent, opening new, affordable-to-them options for our neighbors with higher incomes. It is a win-win that improves economic mobility for everyone in the city. No one with these amendments was putting Philadelphians against each other. We just needed to be strategic about who we help, when. Think about it this way, and someone earlier used this same analogy. Patients who come to an emergency room with a broken bone may wait just a little bit longer than someone having a heart attack. Why? Because if the heart-attack patient does not get help right away, they may not make it to see another day. Philly's housing crisis is also an emergency, and we need the home plan budget to reflect that level of urgency. And the truth is that the first version of this legislation did not do enough of that. Instead, it opened up about 40% of the proposed funding to people making over $100,000 a year without codifying any guardrails to make sure that those most in need will still be able to access these essential programs. And I agree with my colleague, Minority Whip Nicholas O'Rourke, that I think we're all trying to meet some of the same goals. The administration's own data from our last hearing showed that 96% of adaptive modification enrollees and 92% of basic systems repair enrollees already earn 50% of AMI or below. Those are the city clerks, the schoolteachers, the sanitation workers, and our seniors working to keep their homes on fixed incomes. And data proves that enrollees in both of these programs are extremely geographically diverse across every single council district. We know what happens if we do not make the best of this opportunity to help free up as many affordable units as possible. We see how many Philadelphians are sleeping on the streets these days, and with $30 million in federal funding for homeless services in Philly now on the chopping block, it's only going to get worse. And that's why it was critical today that the 200,000 Philadelphia families who are one repair bill or rent increase away from homelessness have the support they need to remain in their homes and off of the street. It is not only the right thing to do, it's not only the moral thing to do, it's the fiscally responsible thing to do, and that's what we did today. Thank you so much.
Chair recognizes Dr. Nina Maia.
President, first, I would like to be acknowledged as present and voting aye on the amendment and aye on the Resolution 250955 as amended. I wanted to take a moment to highlight the amendment I put forward in this home package, because it speaks to something we hear over and over again from families impacted by the Department of Human Services and child welfare as a whole. We need to be sure that these dollars are actually reaching children and youth who are at most risk of becoming homeless and are impacted by our child welfare system. A lot of families who show up in the DHS system are dealing with housing problems. It might be a repair they can't afford, a utility shut-off they can't catch up on, or a young person aging out of the foster care system without a suitable place to land. These issues we can solve if we let our housing programs step in sooner. That's why this amendment does exactly that. It states clearly that home funds can be used to stabilize children and youth who are right on the edge of homelessness, and it builds a direct connection with DHS so they can flag the families who are most vulnerable and make sure they actually have access to rental help, small but critical repairs, utility support, or short-term housing, the kinds of interventions that keep kids with their families and keep young people from slipping into homelessness. I want to thank you, Council President, for including this in the overall package. It strengthens the investment we are making today and signals that Philadelphia is serious about stopping homelessness before it starts, especially for kids and young people aging out of care. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Councilmember Marcus Squiller, also voting aye on the amendment as well as Resolution Number 250955. Chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to my colleagues, especially Housing Committee Chair Jamie Gaudier, and the many amazing advocates who are here today. Philadelphia is stronger because so many of you continue to show up and push toward a fairer, more affordable city. Thank you so much. I first want to take a moment to thank you, Council President, for not only your unwavering commitment to us, your members, of fighting for what we believed in and what we wanted and put on the table. It was, I pushed hard with Chair Gaudier and with our teams, and a special shout-out to Andrew and Molly for being there every single day, but also for Council President's staff, the folks on the inside who were working diligently, non-stop, to make this happen. So thank you all so much, because we know how many hours that you put in for this. As we heard over and over today, we're here because Philadelphia is facing a true emergency. We're the second-poorest big city in America, just by a stretch, but nearly a third of renters and 16% of homeowners spend more than half of their income on housing. Our housing stock is aging, rental costs are rising, and far too many families are being pushed out in the neighborhoods they've called home for generations. As a former housing lawyer and now Vice Chair of the Housing Committee, I've seen this crisis from every angle, and I know the consequences when we fail to act with urgency. Council President, you know my story, that the very first day I showed up to work, the very first day I walked down the hall in City Hall, so happy to put my key in the door and open it, there was a homeless mother and her two children standing outside, saying that she's been waiting for me to get to join this body, and that she needed help. And not only did she get out of the shelter system, but she got into affordable housing in your district, a brand-new unit. Thank you. This home plan represents a once-in-a-generation investment, $800 million to build and repair housing across our city. It's an opportunity for transformation. But the question before us today, we heard over and over, was really simple: Who will feel the impact of this investment first? Since we had our first hearing until now, the federal government has already slashed funding that we will lose subsidies for thousands of units that already exist, and we also are losing funding for repair programs that will actually help us rehab houses that exist throughout our city to make them healthier and safer. So what do we say to that? Philly has to take care of Philly, and that's what we do best. When it gets tough, and when the feds are coming down against us, Philly takes care of Philly, and that is actually what we've seen today. And the great news, Philadelphia, is that Philadelphia already has proven effective tools ready for investment. Our basic systems repair program, adaptive modification program, shallow rent subsidies, homelessness prevention, and the wraparound services that keep people safely housed, these programs are the difference between stability and crisis for more than 200,000 Philadelphia families who are one repair bill or one rent increase away from losing their homes. If we want to be a city that lifts up those most in need, then our resources must reflect that commitment. Today, we aligned the home budget with our values to meet this emergency head-on, to protect the families at the highest risk, and to make smart, targeted investments that will strengthen Philadelphia for all of us. Congratulations, everybody. I think the entire nation is watching us. We're just getting started.
Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to be marked as president and voting aye on amendment, the resolution, I'm sorry, it's Bill 250955 as amended.
Thank you very much. Doily noted. Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones, Jr.
I want to be voting, recognizes voting aye. However, I also want to say this. Nicholas O'Rourke was with me on the 1,300 block of Fraser Street. There was a total rehab done by a woman who worked for the city. Total rehab, you were there. The reason they had to do it that way is because she earned a dollar too much, a nickel too much, to be eligible for these programs. And I'm saying to you, she got the house, it was inherited from her mom. It was one of those houses where, when she came home, she had to kick the furnace to make sure it would start, and she was in housing jeopardy, having worked a middle-class job in the city of Philadelphia. I talk often about ALICE, asset limited, income-constricted, unemployed, the working poor, the people that you also care about. And I'm saying, you prioritize the ultra-poor, the most needy, I get that, but don't you forget the middle class who's being crushed, crushed, crushed by taxes. They don't get the tax write-off that the rich people get, and they don't qualify for the programs that we are putting forward. And as we collapse that middle class, what they tend to do is, "Well, you know, that's my house, I'm gonna give it to a realtor, I'm gonna rent it out. I'm not going to invest in it because I'm gonna get what I can get out of it," and it winds up in this substandard housing that we are talking about. So, all right, we're gonna take an L on this one. You gotta be able to take them, all right? And I'm for it, I'm voting for it. But you will not forget the middle class, not under my watch, not under working-class people that are, many of them are in this room. Many of them are handing out the papers and can't afford the very programs we just voted on. And that's not fair. They work, they do the right thing, they can't come down here and protest. You know why? They're working two, three jobs. And I'm gonna say this to you, right? I'm with you. You pulling me, dragging and screaming? I got it. You're my Jiminy Cricket conscious, all right? But I'm gonna be your Jiminy Cricket conscious. If we on that second $200 million, don't do the right thing for the middle class, because they are the backbone also of our city. And we gotta look out for them, too. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Minister Jones. You are recorded as voting aye. Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young, Jr.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to also be recorded as voting aye for this resolution. I just want to note that this is just the first round of $800 million that this body has supported. So, we got an additional, you know, over $500 million left that we can work through for the residents and the voters and the citizens of the city of Philadelphia. And so, we will do our due diligence like we did this first round. We're gonna do our due diligence again as we put forward more programs that will help the middle class here in the city of Philadelphia. And, you know, we have to really define what that really is, because, you know, we're, you know, in some parts of this city, there's, we're folks making, you know, $65,000. People may consider that middle class, but in reality, that's really not, right? So, we're going to do our due diligence, and I just want the public to know that we had to prioritize those who... I used to write this one word, this one phrase on my, like, cover letters when I was looking for jobs. We have to afford opportunities for those who don't have the means to afford opportunities for themselves, right? That's what we're doing here. That is why we have to do this work, and we had to prioritize those who don't have the means to afford it for themselves, those who don't have the time to come down here to advocate, those who are really just scraping by. You know, we all have family members and friends who are in all types of income brackets, but I can tell you, my own family has, my own mom has waited on the waitlist for BSRP for years until they came through, right? Right? My own mom makes $1,200 a month on social security disability, right? She needs help. She needs help today, right? So, that's why I was supportive of ensuring that the least of the are heard in this first round. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. This concludes the business before the committee of the whole today. Thank you all very much for your attendance.